Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 11th. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis, I'm here.
Councilmember Porter, here.
Councilmember Hartzok, here.
Councilmember Herjehousen, present.
Councilmember Simomo, here.
Mayor Protem Smith, here.
And Mayor Wagner, present.
Prime Minister.
Thank you, and just to let everybody know, Councilmember Debbie Hartzok is joining us online tonight. Thank you. Everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. With that, we'll move into approval of agenda. Do we have any changes tonight, Regan?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. We do not have any public communication tonight, so we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom and dial star six to unmute by phone. Notice campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at city hall or during council meetings, including public comment, is prohibited by state law RCW 42 dot 17A dot 555. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council during the first public comment? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approached the dais, nobody raised their hand, we will close this first public comment period. There will be a second opportunity towards the end of the meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C1 through C5.
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next is new business item number one. Authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with RIA 9 for 2026 to 2035. And let's turn this over to Matt, I guess. Matt, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today. I think PowerPoint will show. Have a brief PowerPoint for you today. Yeah, all right. So my name's Matt Goring. I'm the Salmon Recovery Manager for RIA 9. That is the kind of term we use to represent the Green Duwamish and Central Puget Sound watershed lead entity. So in terms of the outline for this evening, wanted to provide context to the council for consideration of renewal or extension of the interlocal agreement that governs RIA 9, and this extension would run from 2026 to 2035. I'll provide a little background on salmon recovery, an overview, very high level of what's in the salmon habitat plan, a quick run-through of the interlocal agreement itself, provide a little background on our funding and accomplishments, and then a quick look forward. So shouldn't be a surprise to anyone here in terms of the long-term decline in Chinook salmon. This came with population growth and urban development, replumbing of the green watershed, including redirection of the White River into the Puyallup, the Cedar River out the locks instead of into the Black River Pump Station. This culminated with the listing of Puget Sound Chinook in 1999 and the subsequent development of Salmon Recovery Plan by the Puget Sound Partnership in 2007, and ultimately, most recently, with the Salmon Habitat Plan update in RIA 9 or the Green Duwamish. In terms of long-term decline, historically, the Green Duwamish watershed probably supported around 40,000 Chinook returning annually. More recently, we hit a low in 2009 of less than 200 fish. We've rebounded a bit since then. We're within our kind of short-term, short-to-medium-range goal of 1,000 to 4,200 fish, but our long-term goal is 27,000 fish. We're obviously a long ways off of that in terms of looking forward. So the Salmon Recovery Act in 1998 passed by the state legislature really put salmon recovery within the local control. There was concern that with the passage of the listing of Puget Sound Chinook, that the federal government would get more involved in land use controls in terms of driving salmon recovery. And what the legislature did was they created the Governor's Salmon Recovery Office. That worked with the federal government, NOAA Fisheries, to define eight regions, of which were in Puget Sound. And that then gave them control locally in Puget Sound to develop its own salmon recovery plan, rather than having the federal government provide a top-down salmon recovery plan. And then building off of that, the Salmon Recovery Act established lead entities, and that's essentially what the RIA 9 partnership is. And so lead entities were given the control in terms of identifying and prioritizing restoration actions within the watershed. And so when we talk about our salmon recovery plan in RIA 9, that's essentially it. That's our identification of and prioritization of recovery projects in the watershed. So what we're looking to do in RIA 9 is a watershed-based approach, you know, just like salmon don't understand jurisdictional boundaries. They swim up the watershed to spawn and then migrate out, out to Puget Sound. And so what RIA 9 is, is it basically acknowledges, hey, we got to take a holistic watershed view of salmon recovery. And rather than each jurisdiction trying to fight for funding to get their individual projects done, rather, what's the best projects that we need to get done in the watershed that'll collectively have the biggest impact in terms of salmon recovery? So in front of you right there is just a snapshot of the watershed. You can see it extends from Elliott Bay out around Vashon Island, down to Federal Way, and then up to the Cascade Crest. So it's a heavily urbanized watershed, particularly lower down Seattle, up to Lower Green Valley, up into the Middle Green, and then the entire upper watershed up above Howard Hansen Dam is really just forested land, so largely intact habitat. And I'll get into a little more about fish passage at Howard Hansen a little bit later. So the Salmon Habitat Plan, this really is the blueprint for salmon recovery in our watershed. It has an assessment of the Chinook salmon population. It provides an update on what's the best available science in terms of salmon recovery out there. What are the best projects we can do? It establishes habitat goals. These are science-driven goals of what we need to accomplish within the watershed in order to move the needle on increasing productivity with respect to Chinook salmon. Then it summarizes recovery strategies. And then, as I mentioned, there's a capital project list. These are the bigger restoration actions in the watershed. There's about 100 projects identified in the watershed. And then finally, it has a monitoring and adaptive management plan. So we understand, look at what are we investing in? Is it working? And how do we improve those investments moving forward? So getting to the ILA, the ILA really establishes that joint commitment of the 17 local governments within the watershed to guide implementation and adaptive management of the salmon habitat plan. It provides a governance structure, which is the Watershed Ecosystem Forum. That consists of elected officials across the watershed. Councilmember Herjehousen sits on that committee, also includes federal, state partners, as well as NGOs, business interests. Boeing has a seat at the table. It also importantly provides a funding mechanism for supporting implementation of the salmon habitat plan, and that's largely based on a cost-share allocation. Again, I'll get a little more into that in the future slide. And then it provides a mechanism for approving an annual work plan and budget. And then, as you can see, we've already, we're in the third renewal of that ILA right now that expires at the end of the year. The first one was signed and executed in 2001. In terms of our annual work plan, we have the Watershed Coordination Services. That includes staffing the watershed ecosystem forum, coordinating with regional partners such as Puget Sound Partnership and across the state in terms of salmon policy and programs. Then we have project coordination and implementation. This really is our annual grant round and funding strategy for getting those important projects across the finish line. Then we have, we staff a implementation technical committee that provides technical input and recommendations for the Watershed Ecosystem Forum. In terms of funding, I mentioned the ILA is one of our funding sources. It provides about $600,000 annually. You can see there Covington's annual cost share is close to $12,000. That's based on an average of the percent of the population assessed value and land area within the watershed. And then we have grant funding. About $4.2 million of that annually comes from the King County Flood Control District, and we divide that based on large capital projects, revegetation projects, research and monitoring, outreach and education. And then we also get a series of state grant funds that includes about $1.1 million from the Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Fund, and then $300,000 annually from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board. In terms of accomplishments, the RIA 9 partnership has leveraged and supported over $200 million of investments across the watershed. It's supported 3.5 miles of levee setback to reconnect floodplains, about 500 acres repairing areas have been revegetated, 4.5 miles of marine shorelines have been conserved and restored, and about one mile of marine shoreline, the shoreline armoring has been removed. And then looking forward, you've probably seen it in the newspaper, in terms of Howard Hansen Dam, it's obviously plays a huge role in flood protection of the Lower Green River Valley, the Lower Green River Valley. No surprise, it's a huge economic engine. It's about one-eighth of the state's GDP, but it also provides important drinking water supply for the Covington, or the city of Tacoma, Covington Water District, and Lake Haven Water District. And then upstream of that is about, as I mentioned, about 100 miles of inaccessible habitat. And so the federal government released a biological opinion in 2019 saying continued operation of this dam without fish passage is going to jeopardize Chinook salmon, as well as southern resident porcas, and it required the Army Corps to construct a fish passage facility and have it operational by 2031. So that, as I mentioned, that's been a lot of press on that. Senator Murray came out and visited the site and has also been instrumental in securing about $270 million of that cost already. And right now, moving forward, the project has bipartisan support, so we'll see where we get in this next budget cycle. With that, I'll open up any questions any of you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean?
I've got a handful here. Matt, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We had salmon return to the Jenkins Creek, so I think that's, that's huge and a testament to the fact that, you know, efforts we're making are, we're not to the 40,000 annual salmon run that we had before, but as of right now, the fish is not extinct. So I think that's something to be, and I saw it on Facebook, I think, so.
Yeah.
I would encourage, and it might have been NGO that was pushing it, but, you know, Maple Valley totally promoted the heck out of it. So I think, you know, we need to have some type of event here in Covington because Jenkins Creek goes through Covington, so those fish had to go through our town.
No, the local schools to reject your questions, but at least two of the local schools do a salmon release in Jenkins Creek, and so we could plan something.
Yeah. So that was another thing I was going to mention, and I don't know what the outreach is for the Rias, that's the proper plural, but it'd be great, considering this is a long-term effort to, we have public events like everyone else, you know, Covington Days and Kids Fest, and, you know, just having a booth, you know, talking about the importance of salmon and what we're doing, and, you know, how people can get involved and showing up at our salmon release days. I think that'd be outstanding. I've also, for me, one of the things that brought salmon recovery, just crystallized it for me, was in graduate school, and we went and toured one of the rivers near central, like the Yakima or something, and one of the biologists said, you know, you see those kind of piles of rocks over there, which I would have just not even noticed. Well, they're salmon beds. They're just, they're beds that the females have built, and then, you know, they lay their eggs, and then they, I had no idea. And then after being made aware of it, I could see them all over, you know? So I, my view of that river changed after just showing. I would have kicked those rocks over, you know, before that. So, you know, I know, but I'm just saying, not that, I would have not even known that that red was important, that that pile of rocks actually meant something. So I'd encourage you, you know, I know everyone's strapped for resources, but something like that can have a huge impact on people's understanding and experience and go, wow, that's different than what I thought it would be, so.
I, I think you're exactly right on that. Outreach and education, it's an area that's, you know, perpetually underfunded. We've worked through the Watershed Ecosystem Forum to carve out a portion of our budget annually to support education and outreach. We've supported groups like Mid-Sound Fisheries that have educational specialists to get salmon in the schools. They have holded outreach events and planting events, including within the city of Covington. We've worked with the Green River Coalition in a similar method. And then I just highlight in terms of salmon, you know, in Jenkins Creek, you know, we, two years ago funded Mid-Sound Fisheries to look at design of a potential restoration project at the Wingfield Development Area. So that's, if you're not aware of that, certainly we can provide that information to you, but I also would encourage you, you know, as that gets farther along in the design process, if they haven't come to council, you know, let's organize.
Been heard from Parks and Rec, but not directly from.
Yeah, let's, you know, let's organize that and see, you know, we've also could potentially do a walking tour of the site.
Yeah, that'd be great.
What's happening out there.
I don't mean to, I got a couple more, but let others jump in.
Anybody else have any other questions for, hey, Sean, go for it.
All right, this type of stuff.
You said a couple.
Loads my boat. So we've got a new park, Jenkins Creek. It's actually, you know, an old park, but we're starting to see resources develop that. I'd love to see interpretive displays talking about the different resources in this, so salmon definitely would be one that I think we should do, and so obviously coordinating with the city Parks Department on type of information that we should be putting out there just to let people know there's salmon in our rivers. I was interested, you talked about NOAA at the beginning and then kind of the Army Corps. Just curious what, if any, impact the freeze or anything like that's had on your operations?
Yeah.
And then I'm going to say, is there anything the council can do? You know, can we write letters or anything like that to support?
Yeah, in terms of, you know, what's going on in the federal government, in terms of our budget, very limited impact, there is some of that state money that is used as matched to federal dollars, but it's relatively small portion of our budget. So I would say it's a much bigger impact in terms of some of our partners, NOAA Fisheries, obviously, they're, you know, things have gotten pretty quiet, the Corps, you know, I think particularly with downstream fish passes, that's a huge budget item, right? It has bipartisan support. I think it's tucked into, you know, the civil works of the Army Corps, so it's a little shielded there, and it's not just a fish project, it's a water security and flood protection project. So we'll see where that goes. And then the second part of your question was, oh, anything you could do, I would say, you know, when we've done some of that advocacy work in terms of pushing the federal delegation and the Corps on that project, Covington's come to the table. You've signed on to those correspondence, I think. We've got, heard loud and clear from the federal delegation, as well as from Tacoma Water, that that plays a big role. And so I think the city has come to the table and been supportive of these efforts, so I would just say thank you, and I appreciate, I appreciate the support.
I may follow up with you on a couple other things.
Yeah.
Some things.
Anytime.
Ecology's planning that is going to, possibly impact salmon too, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. But any other questions? Thank you for coming tonight and giving a very good presentation. I used to be on RIA 9, and I even learned more tonight than I had when I was.
Well, yeah, it's, I appreciate the opportunity, and with turnover in council, it's always nice to provide a little refresher on what, what it is actually, instead of just running through the words of what's in an ILA.
Right.
Perfect.
Be in 10 years or so. Right?
So council before us is the potential to take action to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with RIA 9 for watershed-based salmon recovery in the Green Duwamish and Central Puget Sound in substantial form as attached.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, it is important for us to continue to support the ILA and not just for protection of our natural habitat, but as Matt mentioned, flooding and water security and salmon are a critical part of, of our lives and of what was here before even we were. So it's important to restore and keep things running and balanced in our ecosystem.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Just that I, you know, this type of stuff I appreciate, and for a small investment can have a huge impact, and I just like the model of cooperating and finding partners and consolidating resources to make a much bigger impact and, and what's good for the fish ultimately is going to be good for us too, because a lot of these species are indicators of how good, how clean the environment is, and if they're not doing well, just so I'm going to get on like soapbox a little bit, just the 6PPDQ, which is a chemical that comes off tires, it just kills Chinook instantly when it's in there, and so you can only imagine, you know, we're swimming in that chemical soup as well, and so the fish are telling us there's a, an issue. You know, the more we can do to help make these ecosystems more resilient and the fish recover, it's ultimately better for us. So often we get criticized for these types of things, saying you only care about salmon, you don't care about people, you know. In the end, this is really all about us, and whether the environment that we live in is going to be able to sustain us, we can sustain even, you know, 20 or 200 salmon, it's going to be tough sledding for us too, so.
Is there anybody else for or against the motion? Beth?
I thank you so much for bringing this up, and I, I think Sean said it, everything I was thinking to a T, but again, being able to support this kind of a program that helps, helps our whole region, it's just, like I said, an indicator of potential, the potential downfall of systems that are also important to the human, sustaining human life, and nothing is an island. We're all in this together, and it's, you know, like for an $11,000 investment is very small compared to what we can do together to help, help the health of our area.
Thank you, Beth. Been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with RIA 9 for watershed-based salmon recovery in the Green Duwamish and Central Puget Sound in substantial form as attached. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Debbie. Motion passes. All right, next up is new business item number two is to authorize South King Housing and Homelessness Partners to distribute funds under RCW 82 dot 14 dot 530. And we have Daphne Hernandez joining us online as well as, is it dorsal plants? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you both for being here, and Daphne or dorsal, are you going to take it on or is Daphne going to start? I'll let you two fight it out.
Okay, I will just start. Thank you, Mayor Wagner and council members. So tonight you will be hearing a presentation from Skip on dorsal plants, the program coordinator, and then I'll just be here to answer any additional questions that you may have. I'll hand it over to dorsal.
Thanks, Daphne. And dorsal, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, in the beautiful city of Covington. I am really excited to be here. Yes, my name really is dorsal plants, and I am the skip program coordinator. I'm really excited this evening to present the skip executive board's recommendation on our 2024 Housing Capital Fund. This is an annual process, and you may recall a similar presentation last year, but that would have been given by Claire Goodwin, the skip executive manager. Unfortunately, she's out with the flu today, and so I'll be doing my best to channel her as I fill in this evening. I do have some slides. Should I share them or?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Is my slide showing?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so for those of you who are new to our work, skip is your subregional affordable housing consortium made up of 11 South King County cities, including Covington and King County. We are a united, coordinated, and collaborative coalition funding the construction and preservation of affordable housing right here in South King County. This is a meaningful opportunity to pull funds together with neighboring cities to collaboratively make an impact on the subregions' affordable housing shortage. And to date, we have pulled over $11.2 million to house our low-income neighbors or to rehabilitate deteriorating multifamily buildings. Skip currently pulls substitute House Bill 1406, House Bill 1590, and general funds from 11 cities listed here on the slide. In 2019, substitute House Bill 1406 became law, allowing cities and counties to recapture a portion of Washington State sales tax when it is used to support affordable housing initiatives. And then in 2020, House Bill 1590 became law, allowing jurisdictions to impose a 1/10 of 1% local sales and use tax to support affordable housing, behavioral health facilities, and related supportive services. Cities had a limited window to act on House Bill 1590, or those revenues would be retained by the county. Only four of the South King County cities chose to collect funds through House Bill 1590, and Covington is one of them. Skip pulls both of these funding sources each year through the execution of an interlocal agreement, plus any general fund contribution cities are willing to make. Use of these pulled funds requires approval from each participating city council, even though you have already contributed these funds to skip. Your council will need to authorize the allocation of these funds to the specific projects that have been recommended. This approach allows multiple cities to pull their funds for projects across South King County to maximize the creation of affordable housing overall and in each city. So in 2024, we had six projects that applied for skip threading throughout South King County. The skip advisory. Uh, the skip advisory board reviewed and made recommendations to the skip executive board to fund four of the six projects. The two remaining projects were both located in the city of Renton and both were eligible to use House Bill fifteen ninety funds, which the city of Renton currently collects, but does not pull with skip. Because of this, the city of Renton plans to directly financially support those two projects. After careful deliberation, the skip executive board concurred with the skip advisory board's recommendation to fund four projects totaling four point one million dollars with the breakdown of funding sources listed on your slide and described in your agenda packet under the skip executive board memo dated January twenty third, twenty twenty five. Per the requirements of our interlocal agreement, we are seeking concurrence from you on this recommendation. The skip executive board recommends the four projects listed on the slide and I'll just briefly go through each of them. The Mercy Housing Northwest Burian Family Housing located in Burian is a ninety-one unit new construction multifamily rental development located on property donated by Mary's Place that currently operates an emergency shelter next door and is in the process of developing a new shelter to replace the existing one. This project will support households earning between thirty percent area median income or A M I and sixty percent A M I and includes set-asides for households with children exiting homelessness and households with a physical disability. Two million dollars was recommended for this project. Uh, the, the Mercy Housing Project was also a recipient of a skip award during the twenty twenty two funding round and the recommended amount for twenty twenty four would be added to the twenty twenty two amount. Second is the T W G Pandean at Star Lake, which is in Kent, adjacent to the Kent Star Lake Link Light Rail Station. The project is a two hundred and fifty-one unit multifamily mixed-use rental project, which will support households earning between thirty and eighty percent A M I with set-asides for families and families with children that require permanent supportive services or who are at risk of homelessness. Seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars was recommended for this project. The T W G project was also a previous awardee and received funds in twenty twenty three and the recommended amount from twenty twenty four would be added to that award. Third is the multi-service center White River Apartment located in Auburn. It's a twenty-unit rehabilitation and preservation project supporting households earning between thirty and sixty percent A M I. Seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars was recommended for that project. And lastly, we have the Habitat for Humanity Burian Miller Creek, which is another previously awarded skip project. It is a forty-unit affordable homeownership project in Burian with twenty units being sold to households earning an average of fifty percent A M I and twenty units supporting households up to eighty percent A M I. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars was recommended for this project. This slide shows total amounts sourced from House Bill fifteen ninety funds contributed by jurisdictions this funding round to the skip housing capital fund and of this total, the amounts by the, by jurisdiction for each project. You will also see the unallocated amount by jurisdiction to be used in future funding rounds and the amount that was carried over from twenty twenty three. I'll show you a similar breakdown in a moment for substitute House Bill fourteen oh six on the next slide. Uh, the first two projects we discussed are being fully funded through House Bill fifteen ninety funds by Covington, uh, Kent and Maple Valley. We are seeking authorization from the council for skip to use one hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars to support the development of Mercy Housing Northwest Burian Family Housing and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-six thousand for the development of T W G's Pandean at Star Lake. This slide shows total amounts sourced from substitute House Bill fourteen oh six funds contributed by jurisdiction this funding round to the housing capital fund and of the totals, the amounts by jurisdiction for the rehabilitation project in Auburn and the homeownership project in Burian. You'll also see the unallocated amounts by jurisdiction to be used in future funding years and the amount that was carried over from twenty twenty three. And then this slide shows the total amount sourced from general funds contributed by jurisdictions and the amount proposed to be allocated to the Burian Miller Creek Homeownership Project. C-Tech was the only jurisdiction to contribute unrestricted funds this year, but we are always open to others contributing, uh, general funds to the housing capital fund. In conclusion, we are looking for your support to authorize the allocation of two hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars from the city's contribution to the skip housing capital fund to finance the affordable housing projects we talked about today per our interlocal government agreement. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions? No? All right. Dorsal, thank you very much for a great presentation. Uh, council, before us, we have a, the potential to authorize the allocation of two hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and forty from the city of Covington's contribution to the skip housing capital fund to finance affordable housing in South King County communities in concurrence with the skip executive board's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, first dorsal, I want to say thank you for this information, at least from my perspective. This is the exact level of visibility that we were hoping for and planning for many years ago when we were making these decisions and skip was kind of getting off the ground. And it's really great to see the organization really in this great groove and, um, having a plan and sticking with it and, and like I said, it's telling us exactly where our money is going, exactly what the projects are. I mean, it's, it's really well done and we really appreciate, um, the visibility because we're really concerned about the control of our funds and having control of them and, um, you, skip is doing a great job, uh, managing. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Hello, dorsal, dorsal, good to see you. Um, I'll keep it short, but the process of choosing where the money goes is a very strange process. I know there's so much thought, so much heart that goes into it. Um, like, like we've said, or I told you in September, we did a tour um, to actually see some of these, the Habitat for Humanity. It was just, it was still the foundation on the ground. That was the only one that was actually from the ground up and it was, and we're hoping to take another tour. Anyone's welcome. But, um, it's, it's, like Jennifer said, it's just so nice to see it come off the ground and get the wheels rolling and to see a good work being done.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right. Thank you. It's been moved in second to authorize the allocation of two hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and forty from the city of Covington's contribution to the skip housing capital fund to finance affordable housing in South King County communities in concurrence with the skip executive board's recommendation. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Dorsal and Daphne, thank you both very much for being here tonight to present this.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
You as well. Thank you. All right, next up is new business item number three, consider amending resolution number two zero two two dash eighteen for an extension on repayment for an interfund loan for the S R five sixteen Jenkins Creek to a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Southeast project known as C I P one one two seven. And Delaney is joining us online. Delaney, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me here tonight. I have a very quick summary to give on this new business item. It is going to be really great. So we have an existing interfund loan for C I P twenty eleven twenty seven and that is scheduled for repayment by February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Yes, that is a week and a half away. As you all know, we have had a few delays in construction with C I P eleven twenty seven and we do have a very small portion of construction that still remains to be completed. And that actually is on hold right now until we reach our fish passage window this upcoming summer. With that in mind, we anticipate construction complete by the end of summer twenty twenty-five and that would be when, when we are pursuing project closeout and repaying that interfund loan. So with this new business item, we are requesting an extension of two years to that interfund loan so that we have a good, healthy buffer to get that repaid. And that is the very quick summary, but I am here for questions if you have any.
Does council have any questions for Delaney? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the quick summary. All right.
Thank you all.
Council before us is the potential to take action to amend resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen in substantial form as that attached hereto approving that an extension of repayment schedule for a total interfund loan up to four million five hundred thousand for the S R five sixteen Jenkins Creek to a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Southeast project known as C I P one twenty-seven. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I appreciate the position that, that the team is in as far as, um, some of the challenges, the construction and timeline challenges and, uh, obviously the funds are already earmarked. It's just a matter of how it, how it gets paid. So, um, allowing that flexibility is what we need to do to get the, uh, project finished.
Thank you, Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Not saying nothing.
Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
Maybe, maybe.
It's been moved in second. It's to amend resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen in substantial form as that attached hereto approving an extension of repayment schedule for the total interfund loan up to four million five hundred thousand for the S R five sixteen Jenkins Creek to a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Southeast project known as C I P one one two seven. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. That concludes our new business for tonight. Um, looking at future agenda items, uh, Debbie reached out to Regan and I, and then, uh, Sean also brought up. So, um, James Delay, one of our, uh, next door residents who is keeping us very informed on the V E S S whose daughter is very involved, even though she's only in third grade, is very knowledgeable about the subject as well. Um, they, James suggested possibly having Bob Ferguson, Governor Ferguson, come to an event to speak about green energy, B E S S, E F S E C and take questions. Regan has done some research into that, so it would have to be. But before we go any further, is there consensus from council? Would council like to entertain this, if it's even possible?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can, can I provide a little direction?
Yeah, please.
So.
Well, no, there are rules and, and what can and cannot happen.
Yeah.
So, and Regan's research that.
So the, the information that James provided is to invite the governor to an already planned event. He doesn't come as a keynote and it's more of like if we have a Covington days or something and, and if he's able to show up, he'll stop by and speak for, was it twelve minutes I said, twelve minutes or less, something like that. Um, so, so that's what that is, which doesn't fit, I think, the intended purpose of what his email was, was about. So just with that is, uh, some background. What exactly is the request from council to invite the governor to an already planned event we have, just to say a few remarks? It wouldn't necessarily be tailored about best. Um, or are you saying, let's create an event with the governor's office, which might prove difficult?
So my thought after what we've talked about, and I have counsel chime in, because this is just my thought, is that maybe we invite create an event and maybe invite someone from the governor's office or even E F S E C, because I know the rules have changed since Governor Ferguson has taken over from what Governor Inslee, or they're in motion to change from what I've been reading. So I don't know if we can create an event to talk about this and then if Governor Ferguson can show up, but maybe somebody else can show up to assist. I would not imagine it being held in here. We would have to work with the school district to hold it like possibly at the pack at Kentwood. Uh, or, but that's what I envisioned, but Christina, do you have your hat or?
Yeah, I do. Christina did. I do too.
Whatever way we can respectfully get him to show up.
Mm-hmm.
I'll take. Um, I don't like the, either him or a representative. If it were, if, if we were to coordinate something like this, especially in getting the school district involved, it would be nice to get some form of guarantee that whether it's twelve minutes or however much time, the people want, the people want.
Yeah, that, that's why, um, the avenue that James shared with council is not a good avenue for, I think, what council is wanting, because e- even, even if he were to come, they said, still last minute, he may not show up.
Very cool.
So it, it wasn't, so I think if, if we're wanting to do where I think council's going, this is, um, a whole new event that would be centered around the governor being here, that we'd have to schedule with his office.
And he wouldn't and.
Respectfully.
So that, to go on that, it wouldn't be a question and answer period because he's only here for twelve minutes and he's not, doesn't have the time to answer a lot of questions. And I don't mean that negatively. It's just, he's extremely busy and a lot of things going on, so he could give comments, but I would also want to make sure that it's kept as a positive meeting.
Sure.
And not as.
Him being grilled.
Grilled or attacked or anything like that, because he's just stepping into something new. And then, uh, Sean had some great comments that he shared, so.
So we thought about some potential hooks for this, that we have a moratorium on best that will be coming up. Um, and we'll have to take action at some point. It might be good to plan something around that, you know, probably prior to when we have to either pass an ordinance or do whatever. So that's a, a already established um, deadlines that we're gonna have to work with. So I would consider that. And then in order to increase our appeal, um, I had mentioned that we should think about coordinating with Maple Valley and Black Diamond as well. They have, uh, issues related to, you know, green energy and growth as well. And if we've got three cities working on it, that increases the number of potential people that could come and that makes it more attractive to the governor's office to attend. And I like the mayor's idea that, you know, if we can't get the governor himself, let's at least get his office. Someone will show up if we ask, so.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
Yeah.
I might also suggest that we have it at Matson if we can.
Yeah.
Just because it's right there.
It's, it, the only reason I said Kentwood is good for space.
You're right. You're right. It would be great and it's.
It's close enough.
Yep. Yeah, but I, I like that idea of Matson, because that's where we held the, uh, meetings for the roundabout. When we were building the Foss Roundabout was at Matson. When we did a working session.
But.
Anybody else?
I was just, I was thinking at Tri-Cities or something similar, so I, I, I think that would be really advantageous because this is not something just, that just affects Covington. Our moratorium actually puts more pressure on the, the surrounding communities. Um, so I, I think it would be really great to, to collaborate.
So we're down there next Tuesday. You want me to just stop on the governor's?
Yeah, if you could do that.
I know where he sits.
Also. What we'll do is to start this, um, we'll contact the governor's office and see if it's even something they're willing to do. If so, we can get some possible dates and then coordinate with the other cities and the school district.
Okay.
Debbie's raising her hand.
Oh, Debbie, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, well, I just wanted to say I concur, um, that having the tri-city approach is, is, um, the best idea. Um, ideally, if we could have it and fit into Matson, that would be wonderful just because of, um, the impact on that community. But I think we would have to work pretty hard with our residents, um, and our community to make sure people understood this wasn't going to be an open forum town hall, but I think it would be very much appreciated, even, even if they can't ask their questions just to get the information. Um, and then question, uh, Regan for you. When is that moratorium expiring?
It was a year moratorium. So I don't know if you happen to have that date on the top of your head?
Isn't it this fall?
Yeah.
It'll be in May.
Oh, May.
Okay. Yeah. It's coming up. We're probably gonna be extending that because we're also watching what's happening at the legislative session on these topics. We just won't know in time. So, yeah, plan to see that. I think it's May.
That year went pretty fast.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Debbie?
No, that's it. Thank you.
So since he, if he shows up, pardon? I saw you. Pardon?
You're good.
Okay. Um, maybe we have a preset of. Maybe we have a preset of questions that he can answer ahead of time. That way it shows ahead of time. That way we're not doing from the audience and stuff since he's short on time and.
Enough that he can address the issues that are important to local.
Yep.
And we could collect ideas ahead of time.
Okay. Yeah, we can reach out to James and a couple of other people. Okay. Beth.
So that maybe also be included, maybe as a, as a, like an informational presentation about the ECF as committee in the process so that people can hear it firsthand about if this, then that and as an educational and then he can come and talk as well. So it's, even if he can't, God forbid, make it, then at least people are getting something for it, you know?
I can dress somebody up.
Yeah.
Or zoom in and have him zoom in or something with a monitor if, if nothing else, you know?
All right. Well, thank you, Albert. So anything else you need from us, Regan?
Well, yeah, I, I think Beth just went a little different direction. So I want to make sure I'm capturing that. So even if we can get the governor virtually, that's fine just to come in, but but it sounded like some presentations on the whole cycle and process.
I mean, what if, what if we can't make it, you know, then, then everybody's there for like what, right? But this, this kind of makes sense. This is what we're talking about and want to hear.
And, and who are you thinking to ask to come in and give those was like FSAC or who are we?
Yeah, I said the governor's office.
Somebody from the governor's office and FSAC.
You, Regan?
Yeah. I, I. We could, but I don't want to be the authority on this.
I think having Bob here in person would be better than online.
It would be.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jennifer.
With respect.
So, okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll compile all this and we'll, we'll get something going.
Great. All right. Thank you, counsel. Is there anything else that council would like to see on a future agenda? Okay. All right. With that, we'll move into council staff comments. Adam.
I have nothing to see me.
Great. Thank you. Ethan.
Yeah. Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you, Ethan. Don.
Uh, nothing tonight for me either. Thank you.
I want to say that the Covington connector Lake Point Boulevard, the stoplights, the sidewalk, everything out there looks great.
It's getting there.
Yeah. Thank you. Selena.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. And thank you also for working with Rockell Lake Point to make that happen as well. Casey.
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark.
There's no executive session and I have no additional report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Regan.
Thank you. I don't want to end that role of nothing tonight, but I'll just say excited for next Tuesday heading to Olympia. Got our, our schedule. We may add a couple more meetings in there if we're able to, but at that point, at this point, that's what we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Krista.
Good evening. I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's working, Krista, it's working much better. Thank you. Joe.
I really have nothing, but if you have nothing planned for Friday afternoon, I know there's something special about the day. But if you have nothing planned, come on down to Canyon Ridge and support the Canyon Ridge's first wrestling match of the year as I am one of the coaches on the wrestling team this year. So come on down and support us.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Jennifer.
I have nothing for tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Debbie.
Thank you. I am hoping to join you in Olympia next week or going down to Olympia, but kind of waiting till the last minute to see if I'll be able to hobble my way through. And I would just like to say a big thank you to the street crew for all the work they've done with the ice. I know it was much appreciated by our residents that they were getting all of those updates on, on what to expect with weather and when they were coming out to deice and whatnot. And then just a, a big thank you also, Adam, to your detectives and team for the work they did to bring that robbery suspect in. That was really an amazing story, but with a good, good outcome. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Debbie.
And we found out today he's being held on bail till trial.
Oh, it's not a catch and release?
Yeah, there's no bail. The judge said you're not getting out till trial.
Wow, thank you. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Future Sound Regional Fire Authority had its most recent meeting last Wednesday. A whole host of things, but the main issue is they have the fire benefit charge and there's actually an opportunity for the public to petition for changes to their five benefit charge. So people, we actually got four of those. And so this meeting was our first view of their request and rationale for having either their benefit charged eliminated or reduced. So we went over that. We'll vote on those requests at the next meeting a week from this Wednesday. The chief mentioned that they went to or were going to Olympia the following day for their lobby day, the Washington Fire Chiefs Association. They were lobbying on a whole host of issues from firefighter safety to funding, as you can imagine. So I'll find out at the next meeting what the outcome of that was. It'd be interesting going forward, I'm thinking out loud now, coordinating some of our asks if they're, you know, in the future, you know, if they overlap on some things, it'd be interesting to maximize our impact if they, hey, we're just following up on what the Washington Fire Chiefs Association said regarding, you know, widening highway eighteen or something. So we also have reports from different departments. So operations mentioned that they, the Washington Fire Chiefs Association again has been contacted by the Attorney General's Office related to the issue I brought up last time about tools and equipment being stolen off fire engines. So I think it's becoming a bigger problem across the, the region and maybe even the state. And so I think they're looking to learn more about what's happening and potentially it changes to the law, you know, how we can potentially prosecute, capture these criminals and then prosecute them. So I guess I thought that was good, although I'm still disappointed we have to deal with this. I think I mentioned last week, the fire crews that were deployed down to California came back. They're going to circle back with the board on basically what they did while they were down there and how that went. From what I've seen, it was pretty devastating, you know, I think they were just I don't think it pressed the right word, just stunned by the scale of this fire, you know, and these fires. So it's just, I'm just grateful we have a community that allows and is committed to helping others because eventually we may need that help too. Chief Sound Fire also has a cares program similar to kind of, you know, our outreach. So they have community cares. They send out social workers sometimes when they're, when a person's in crisis. And they assisted two thousand, four hundred and forty eight people last year with those community cares responses. And what's great about that is it gets those people to support they need, but it also frees up the fire department or firefighters that had historically been responding to those types of calls. So you now have trained individuals that can help someone in a mental health crisis or some other type of crisis, and that allows the fire department firefighters to go back to into service if there needed to be called for a fire. So it's a, it's, it's a really successful program. So and I think that is all I had. So.
Thanks, Sean. Beth.
Um, I, I just wanted to give a shout out to our youth council and staff that assists and the adult council advisor. I, I just, you know, you, with everything that's going on today in the world out there, I feel like they're a shining beacon of hope, which sounds kind of cliche, but it's true. I mean, when we look for those little morsels of, of positivity and, and our youth that really just want to step up and make things better, you know, and so I appreciate the work that they're doing. And I know a lot of them are newer, they're learning through what they can do and I'm feeling empowered. And so, you know, we'll continue to advocate obviously for what, what they're asking us to do, especially when it comes to our relations with the school district. But anyway, I just, it was a great meeting with them and just sitting and listening to what they have to say and some of their ideas. So and looking forward to next Tuesday, connecting with our legislators.
Thank you, Beth. Christina.
Thank you, Beth. I was also going to mention the council or the youth council. And, you know, Sean, it breaks our hearts that things are being stolen off our trust because this is true. And then we sit through that hour and my mind just can't stop. Like there has to be a better way. There has to be a better way and, and it can't just be Band-Aid after Band-Aid, after Band-Aid, after Band-Aid. And whether that means on the city level, on the district level, or on the state level, that changes need to be made. They need to be made because literally they are our future. And when they come here and they tell us that safety and they, there's fear involved and, 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 and these are excellent children. It's like, instead of giving them every tool that they need to thrive, we're slapping Band-Aids on things that should not happen. So that's neither here nor there. I am super proud of them. It's, it's really nice to see a, a good set of kids with a head on their shoulders. That's really, that's solid. So, so very proud of them. And yeah, definitely looking forward to Tuesday. I need to know, are we going to be doing a lot of walking or no? This determines our shoes.
Oh, yeah. You walk from one end to the other to the back. Let's see.
I think I learned.
And the trousers are like marble.
Chunky heels.
I use the elevator when I can get it. You don't want to see this falling down the.
No, I don't.
I did include in my email my comfortable walking shoes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, Jeff, we do want to see it because America Sony's own video is still. It might help.
As long as you're okay.
The city.
No attention.
And my boot breaks marble. So, but yeah.
Boo, marvels.
And if we all end up carpooling together, I'm really excited.
Well, I am driving. So meet here at
Seven.
Eight, seven thirty. It's, it's all in Regan's email.
I've read that. I, I know. I'm getting better about emails, people.
I have to drive separately because I have some business meeting.
All right.
Oh, you don't have school that day, so.
He said he's going to enjoy his day off.
No, Tuesday, I got, I got, I got four day weekend. So, I mean.
He's actually going to rest.
I might, I might rest my great papers.
I'm hoping to run into our representative that you and I discussed earlier. So, so if I don't make a meeting, you'll know where I'm at.
With your boots.
Make sure the boot stays on your foot, not in your hands.
Or I can't, if I take a boot off, I can't walk anymore. So so thank you for getting that all coordinated, Regan and Emily. Emily and is Holly going to join us? Or is it Emily and? Okay.
I took with it.
Going back to the youth council. Awesome. And I'll reach out to the principals and extend. I know you've already reached out to Krista. I'll reach back out to Heidi and Sam. Thank you. I don't know why I keep forgetting Sam, but to follow up to that we are welcome to come. But going with the school board, when we were talking, you started, Krista, we, I interrupted you were saying that it is confirmed for the eighteenth of March? Okay, so the school board meeting is here on March eighteenth. And it's already in our calendars. And tonight, they, the school board is interviewing the seven finalists. And then they'll go into executive session tonight, most likely to discuss qualifications. I don't know if they're making the decision tonight or not, but they had narrowed it down to seven people. And so that is tonight that they're doing that. And then I know that last time I mentioned that I was at the grand opening of Cancer Center. But Valentine's Day is this Friday, but also remember that February is National Heart Month. So it's Krista and I are wearing red for that reason. And Fan Valentine, well, you've got shaded red too. We've all got a shade of red on us for some, you know, if not, it's in us. But so just we don't, yeah, okay, I won't say anymore. But that is National Heart Month and so both Multi-Care and Valley Medical do promote that as well. That is all I have. We'll move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel? There is no one here and there is no one online. We do not have an executive session at this time and this meeting is adjourned at eight, ten P M. Thank you all very much.